I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes of a regular session tomorrow, July 3rd. Second, you need discussion on the minutes? Um, did I read them? And I assume Jody's gonna check on the, or go through the, take us through the financial?
Yes, Deb Boyd says it's the same as last month. Nothing really has changed. She's working on the new budget for next year. And just wanted to remind you, there may be a private tuition that you'll have to thoroughly balance out in the future. Maybe.
Okay.
But those are the three points of interest.
Does anybody have any questions on?
No.
No.
The line items are pretty good right now.
Right now, yeah. Um, then we'll move on to communications. While we're at communications, just FYI, did receive notice from the teachers to, we'd like to start conversations for more in negotiation here with the teachers who are in the unit. I think it was a two-year, two days. Oh, okay. It did go fast. Last year, we did, um, we did administrative systems for professionals. So I guess I would like for everybody to start thinking. I know I've been through the training, Megan's been through the training, Kristin's been through the training. Say it here, Kate.
I'm saying it, Mary.
It's great training. Are we gonna do IBB? Is Dan Kane the teacher's rep?
Right.
Isn't he?
No. Who am I telling you?
Okay, so I don't know. I'm gonna hope that they wanna do the interest-based bargaining.
We've done it. And I'll be able to just head up.
Okay.
I will ask them.
Okay. So, um, yeah. And then hopefully we'll figure out who wants to, maybe somebody wants to, or somebody doesn't want to. You want to?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I would get to, yeah. But Mary needs to learn.
What if I just go to the class where you learn it? And then I go through.
I want you on that one. Should we be on that?
No, that's a military thing.
When we've had the training, we've opened it up to everyone who wants to go. It don't have to be on the negotiations.
Okay.
Even though it was like right before the negotiations started.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. We were so smart, it was abbreviated.
Wait, and are they even gonna do the training again?
We were on fast track. Yeah, they, because they do it week together.
It was Kate's first time, and she was on the fast track, and she's fine.
Yeah, I just, I passed.
But I will also ask about training. Where are we?
Okay.
I'll get back to that.
I, yeah.
I'd love to learn how to do that.
It's just a really, it's a really positive experience.
No, I know that everybody's like, I love it.
I just felt like I've actually been able to translate it over. It's a great, it's not that I.
It's very common sense, but just like with some, probably be like, well, that makes sense.
And I don't, yeah.
Well, it brings in everybody's stance, our perspective on really the agreement.
Here it is. What do we want? Throw it up on the board. It's really good.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and so then, the school budget liaisons, it looks like with these.
Well, the elementaries get done during the month of January. During the school community, you look at the budget line guideline. And then the MCAST report one's still on a Saturday, but that's not even a joint committee, so.
Who's our liaison this year, do you know? For the Board of Selectmen? I don't remember, actually. Is it Larry again? I don't know, Larry Morrison? Was it Kevin?
It might have been him. It was Kevin, and it was him, and I remember thinking like, ooh, he's gonna be tough, but he wasn't supposed to be so. He was great.
Yeah.
It went smoothly.
It was an effort.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I think that's all the, that's all the communications then, right? Um, I guess we'll go right to your report.
All right, so lots going on in Burgess, as always. Enrollment is steady. Recognition, under recognition, I do want to give a huge shout out to Christine Nissen. It appears that the Burgess 5K earns approximately $3,700, which is just a few hundred dollars shy of what we, what we had last year. And she just did an amazing job yet again. Congratulations to Sue Moriarty. Sue Moriarty retired Friday. She did it after more than 20 years as an instructional assistant. So we wish her the best of luck. She has a family now, has a ten, and she has an elderly dad that she's, that she's helping with. So we wish her the very best. Curriculum instruction, we're gonna circle back to the MCAST report, so I'll skip over that. Parent teacher conferences are next week. Tuesday, there's an early release, and we have Thursday evening professional development. In December, we have TD day on the fourth and an early release day, and that will focus on school safety. We are working with all of our EMS agencies and Kevin, our emergency management director, to sort of update and revise. We do it every year, but we're giving it a broader look this year to revise a lot of our systems and our written policies. You can peruse the department in grade level meetings. There is a lot going on, and they're very proud to share. Hence our four-page report. We love it. Just lots of good things going on, lots of writing. Circle back to that, the MCAST report. This is Melissa. And the health office, you know, Lisa does just such an amazing job. So she, we had a large number of our staff receive flu shots back on the 16, vision and hearing screenings. Something of interest, something really awesome that happened yesterday. Help me with this. Oh, my bad. Maybe actually happened tomorrow. There's a veterans luncheon at the high school.
I think it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. And so I'll call for cards for the veterans was put out to the elementary schools. So our kids made, not every single classroom, but a large number of the classrooms participated and made some beautiful, adorable cards for our veterans, so, which is wonderful. And on another note, once again, Bob Reire organized a Veterans Day ceremony at the old cemetery. And we brought a third grade classroom, Jen Mullins' classroom, whose husband Pete is deployed. He's been on, he's deployed for quite some time now.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So she brought her students and Alicia, uh, he came back, yeah. Alicia brought her class. The children sang the Sarnacal banner, you know, the Pledge of Allegiance. And then they went and they placed flags on the tombstones of the Revolutionary War soldiers. So it's a beautiful event. It's something that Bob did as a kid, so it was something really important to him. We remembered it, and I think it's a single week for our children. So just thank you to Bob. And the Comfort Zone, we did this Comfort Zone camp. Not we, but Sherri Kowski organized it. It's a camp for people who have suffered loss. And she, we had a great event here, I think it was two years ago, on a Saturday. It was very well attended. She's organized an even bigger event with the help of Lisa Muniar to, to go and get at the high school on December 6th. December, oh, hold on.
December 7th?
Yeah, December 7th.
So I love that in fifth grade, they're studying sentence structure, parts of speech. Did we do that earlier?
We do.
Okay.
They do.
Okay. I just didn't know if I noticed it this time, it was called out in fifth grade, but.
So called out because as we get into our, into our MCAST report, you'll notice there's a general theme on all of the ELA, but there's a lot of grading and things like that.
I got one of those.
All right, thanks. It isn't a fresh start, it's for elementary schools, so elementary school ELA, so far. Monday when I was there.
Grabberly?
All right, so we'll, um, we'll work on it, we'll dive right into the.
Use your teacher voice, say it when you're ready. Say it, do it.
I've done that.
You let me know when you're ready. Two cops are listening.
So we will dive into the MCAST report. I'm gonna start off with recommendations and positive trends, and Jody will give you some more in-depth detail. And then we'll go on to some recommendations for improvement. So, exception, I spelled my own name wrong at the top of the report. We'll fix that. So just the really good news is we are now, we have enough years of MCAST's Next Generation to actually be looking at trends and really being able to drill down to, you know, what are our strengths? Where do we need to do continued work? So I'm going to just go through these, these bulletted items. 64% of Burgess students in grade three through six met or exceeded expectations on the English Language Arts Assessment compared to 52% of the Massachusetts students in the same grade span. Okay, so definitely.
And when were we last year, do you remember?
I don't have that with me.
That's okay.
But we're gonna get into some latter things right here. 66% of the Burgess students met or exceeded the math, on the math, compared to 49 at the state level. 64% of our fifth graders met or exceeded expectations on the Next Generation MCAST Science and Technology Assessment compared to 49 at the state level. This is really, comparing this really helps. So the average scaled score for Burgess students on the English Language Arts Assessment between 2019 was a 507.3. They set targets for us based on what our 2018 performance was. And that target was a 50, was a 504.3. So we exceeded our target by two points. Our scaled score in 18 was a 506. Was a 504.3.
Yep.
The, so likewise for math, the scale, average scaled score for 2019 was a 509.1. The Burgess students exceeded the 2019 target of 507.5 by 1.6 points. Our average scaled score in 2018 was a 50. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have them. Okay, so we exceeded the target. I believe it was, we were like a 506.5 for 18, and I can get that for you. The average student growth percentile for Burgess students in ELA was a 52.4, and in math was 63.4. And the median for student growth in the state is a 50. In science and technology and engineering, because we don't have the multiple years of data to make the comparative, we have only been using Next Gen since last year. We exceeded the initial 2019 targets. And our participation rate was 100%. I will hand it over to Jody.
So this is where it gets complicated, because the state likes to then look at not only this year's data, but last year's data. It's different. The accountability this year is different. You can see that it's weighted year to year. 2018 is weighted at 40%, 2019 is 60%. So Burgess Elementary is actually not requiring or acquiring assistance or intervention because they are meeting or exceeding targets at a rate of 79%. So when you're comparing year-to-year data, Burgess to Burgess, every year, they keep improving every year at a pretty high rate. 79, the target for the state is 75, so.
Although 75 is where their intervention is planned?
No, it's, it's like scaffolded. The interventions really don't take place until like when you're in the 40, 50%. So, but it's like meeting and exceeding substantially improving, you know, not, you know, not meeting. So there has scaffolds going down. Burgess is not even, they keep moving up. So they are meeting and exceeding most of their targets, except potentially a subgroup.
Are there outside incentives other than the obvious, like kids are smart? But other than that, like are there, like state incentives to do that?
There are schools of recognition that they put out there.
So what does that do? Is it, is that something that's advertised as?
Yes, a school that is, has high performance, high achievement, high growth, and exceeding or meeting their, exceeding their targets, not meeting. So otherwise, we really do a good job of, you know, giving great accomplishments and kudos to the teachers who are working really hard. They're the ones that really should get the, you know, the notoriety.
Right, right.
And the students for learning from the teachers. So it's within the parents, but supporting the teachers. But there are schools of recognition out there.
So that's just something that goes on, like the website, that people are looking for a town to move to, they would look at that as part of the.
Yeah.
So kickbacks, no mind. No texts to you, Mrs. Kelly.
So in order to get those numbers, there are formulas to get each of those numbers, the 79%, the 2018 and 2019 percent. So we'll look at that on the next page. What I want to make note of is the accountability percentile. That's the only comparison data that actually ranks Burgess Elementary to other elementary schools of its kind. And that is schools that test a combination of grades three, four, five, and six. So, and it's in the top 20th percent, because it's 80th percentile, the school one I took. So other schools that test three through six, Burgess in the top 20% of those schools, which is remarkable, really. So there are three categories. The testing group three to six, then the testing group non-high school, three to eight, would be like a junior high mix, and then 10th grade only. So there's three categories in that area.
Do they look like also similar amounts of?
It's testing rates only.
No, okay. Just testing rates, so not population-based?
No. Testing rates only.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So then.
That's actually even harder than to be.
Oh, yeah. To be in the percentile.
I'd be curious, look at, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's other factors we know, even with the testing, this other subgroups, but it's only your categories based on your testing. So now if we turn the page to page three, this is this year's, and this is what the formula is all about. It's, as Kathy said, it's all about how you rated to your targets from last year. And I put a little rubric down below for you to follow because, because it gets complicated. So there are two big groups. Your all-students group and your lowest-performing students group. Each are weighted at a 50-50%. So those lowest-performing students are students who have basically, it's based on their average scores for both math and ELA. It's not a single test, it's the combination of both tests. So in this school, it's, you've gotta be 20 students or more. 20 is the least amount of students. How many do you have in this school identified for lowest performing? Is it 20? How many lowest performing students in your school?
25% of the grade level.
But in the, what's your say?
So it would be?
It's a minimum of 20, or.
Close to 100, yeah.
Or 25% of each grade level. So I didn't know if she had.
Well, 25%.
100 is 25. So it's about 25 kids per grade. And it's, they're identified by the average of their two testing scores, not just one of them. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So they're also put in the all-students category too. So think of the weight. The all-students is 50%, your lowest performing is 50%. But those lowest performing students are also in your all-students category.
So it's like double dipped, double, double. But it's the same formula for everybody, so it's still apples to apples.
And the idea is if you raise your lowest performing group, you're obviously minimizing that gap. That's the idea behind the actual two groups. So that said, each of them, each category has a rubric based on how they met their targets. A four indicates that the achievement level for, I won't go through all, but the achievement language arts group of all students, they met, they exceeded their target. The mathematics achievement for all students, they exceeded their target. The science achievement, they met their target, whatever was assigned. Now the DESC, this is the other point we should know, the DES, we gave our targets was. Our targets late in the school year, last year, like January.
We're getting to that same point.
Right. They said this year that we were hopeful to have those targets ahead of time, but earlier in the school year, we're still waiting. So nonetheless, to meet or exceed are still an achievement, very remarkable stats. So if you go to the lowest performing, they, for two points, they improved, but they didn't meet. And then for mathematics, they exceeded. And then you get a total amount of points in the achievement category. For all students, it's 11 out of 12, and for lowest performing, six out of eight. Well, achievement is also weighted at a 65.5%. So.
I totally should have paid attention.
In math class, right. So what, the idea is if you follow the chart, the weights are a three-to-one ratio, growth to achievement. You see the 22.5 to the 67.5? It's a three-to-one ratio. So then I put, if you really want to go back to math plus, the formulas are on page two. They do work.
Check those out.
Yes, and you can check. I have checked them all, but. So you get down, you get the, the weights for each category. Chronic absenteeism is in its second year of, as an element towards accountability. They got, I think, no change. They got one out of four last year, you got one out of four this year.
Please, please bear in mind. Well, it looks, it appears, Mr. Jordan, it appears that we have no change for, in a subgroup situation, if you look at the lowest performing, we actually have a decline. Burgess's overall attendance is, we, our absenteeism is 4.7%. That is less than the state average. What ends up happening, and this happens last year as well, is that certain subgroups impact the attendance. And if, you know, if you look at the detail on the DESC website, one of the subgroups that actually showed a decline was our special education students. Keeping in mind, we have programs that are designed for children who are medically fragile. We have children who come to school who have cancer diagnoses. Their attendance, you know, definitely has an impact here. So it's somewhat frustrating, because we do the right thing by creating our programs, and then we have attendance issues for very logical and, you know, valid reasons. But, so that's where it is, because our overall attendance is outstanding, for school size.
And we are getting better tracking things too, so.
Yeah, we think you can exempt certain things. Why is it even put in the pool?
Well, because of the way you code, but we are, so we do provide.
Like if somebody is getting home school, uh, tutored.
Tutoring, correct. So we're getting better with coding that for this year, this coming year. So if a child is out for medical, medically due reasons, pretty much home hospital.
It should be.
We, and we provide home tutoring.
They should be present.
Well, we have to mark them codes.
Yeah.
We're working on the, and we do have, we'll get into a little bit more detail, but we have a task force. So we have Lisa Muniar, two of our adjustment counselors, myself. We are meeting weekly, looking at trends. And then we are meeting once a month, going over, looking at 10% absenteeism or more, because that's sort of the indicator. We are scheduling meetings with parents. We're having contracts, attendance contracts of the children, and the parent signs. Officer Murray is doing wellbeing checks, so they're not getting calls, so she's going to home zoom checking. And, you know, if necessary, which is always our last resort, we're reaching out to other agencies to assist in making sure. But those are not the children who are medically fragile.
Those are the Alexanders that get the food twice. Sorry, I am personally.
But anyway, yeah.
But the state put this.
It's just, it's like it's, um.
They need to be in school, now you're kind of a school year.
Of course.
Yes, and, and then you have the transient students, they don't count unless they're in school for more than 20 days. So this, all these criteria. But it's information, and it's information that's driving some early decisions being made of, you know, with particular students and families that may have, may have been overlooked at some point, you know. So it's only 10% of the weight, if you noticed.
Yeah, no, of course.
It's not heavily weighted, but it's the criteria. And that's, this is only in its second year of implementation, so I'm sure that'll get better. So what they do is they apply this formula based on each category. They get a criterion reference percent for all students, a criterion reference percent for lowest performing, and they average those two together, like I said, at a 50-50% rate. And that's how we got the 80%.
Not such a summatimeric, we are gonna weight in 10% absenteeism.
That's true, much higher.
One-stop plot time.
Yes, this is one of the favorites. So, um, the growth chart.
Visual learner, is that making a visual learner?
Yeah, that's why we get away from the rubrics and stuff. So for ELA, this chart shows the different grade levels and the full school. The larger circle is the all-school category, and then it's color-coded for each grade. The idea here is to, an SGP, as Kathy said earlier, is to be above 50%. And clearly, that's happening in most, in all the grade levels, even the whole school. So, and in comparison to the state, which is the X, we're achieving and growing far better at a rate than the state. So if you look on page five, that's the mathematics. This is exactly what you want to see, movement towards that upper right-hand corner.
Just the ELA real quick, I'm sorry. But fifth grade ELA, there's, that's the one area that there's a little bit of a.
It's still above the state, and you're still.
It is, I'm meeting, I've seen expectations, but.
But it's a lower than 40.
A little bit, right.
But it's still in the range of the 40 to 60.
You'd have to consider the composition, the class, you know, maybe a class that's heavy with, with students with some age difference.
It's still within the range, you know. They want you to be, 50 is the middle mark, but 40 to 60 isn't still the range.
Okay.
But the math is absolutely what you want to see. It's really growing at least in math there, especially that last, that dark green, what was that, grade six.
Grade six is a lot for the school.
Yeah. So now we'll look at the individual grades performances and.
That's this year's seventh grade class.
Last year's, which is interesting, because. So what I like to do on these tables is look at year-to-year trends and then cohort trends. So what I mean year-to-year, I'm looking at the same grade 2018 to 2019, but different groups of kids. So if you look at grade three, grade three, the Sturbridge in 2018 to 2019, you can clearly see in the top two categories that there was significant increase to the number of students in those, in those two grades. It's great. We want, we want to increase in the top two categories. Okay, so I'm gonna give you some trends for year-to-year data first. In grade four, if you look at 2018 to 2019, there is a decrease in the number of students in the not-meeting category, and, but continues to perform above the state in Union 61 in the top two categories. Okay?
And it's.
Oh, and the not-meeting.
Not-meeting, yeah.
Significant decrease in the not-meeting.
In grade five, if you go 18 to 19. In grade five, if you go 18 to 19, perform slightly higher than the state in Union 61 schools. Not significantly. And then in grade six, there is a typo. 2019 should read 62 percent. And I'm like, oh, that doesn't equal 100, so that's why I went back and checked. So if you change that, you can actually see that grade six is performing well above the state in Union 61 schools, while increasing the number in the upper categories. So now stay on that page, we'll do a cohort group. So this is the same group of kids, go to grade three ELA, 2018, to grade four, 2019, I'm on ELA. Right? So you see 63 to 62, and then 33 to 34, and then, and then four to three. It's see how, the diagonals?
Yeah.
That gives us a trend, we're looking at the same group of kids. And you can see from year one, year three to year four, similar, nothing significant there. We're talking percentages.
But the ELA went down, right?
Mm-hmm. So then if you look at from grade four to five.
Grade four ELA, 2018 to 2019, went from 66 to 60, okay.
Four to five, 66 to 60 percent, 26 to 30. A slight decreasing trend going on there, right? Because then there's a drop in the highest performing to the middle, increase in the middle. See that trend? And then from grade five to grade six, increased number of students performing in the upper categories. That's like a good positive trend. Okay? So you can, with the data, you can actually see a lot of good things happening within the student body and within the grade level.
I miss those things.
For, for math, on page seven, if you look at, again, we'll go year to year data. Yeah. Year to year data from grade three, performing above the state in Union 61 schools. However, there's a slight negative trend. For grade four, increased performance in the upper categories, you've got a good positive trend in grade four. In grade five, 95 percent of the students are in the top three categories, that's great. And then in grade six, 98 percent of your students are in the middle and high. Now cohort data, we'll go from grade three to grade four. Increased number of students in the top two categories, that's the diagonal. On grade four to grade five, decreased number of students in the bottom category with a slight negative trend in the other grade. And then grade five to six, a true positive trend. Questions with that one? So then on page eight, for science, there's no comparative data because it was the first year last year for the next generation test. We'll have more comparative data in the future, but grade five is performing above the state in similar to Union 61. And then a little visual for you to show over the years, how grade six compared year to year. This is grade six for the last three years in both ELA and math. You know, you look at ELA, it certainly showing.
This is not same kids, this is same grade.
This is same grade, yeah. So how they compare to their previous grades. Just the visual of all the data coming together for grade six. Sure, you know, you still have very, you know, 50, what's that, 52, 62 percent 2019, as you said, in the first chart actually. For ELA, 62 percent of the student body in grade six is in the top two categories. And then for math, 70, is that, is that 73? What's this number? Is that 80?
73, right?
Yes, like, I don't know if that was eight or six. Okay, so 73 of the sixth graders have met that 500 points that they needed to get in the meeting and exceeding category.
Remind me, was 2018 on paper and 2019 on computer?
We're in our third year. Last year was, 19 was our third year.
Third year of testing.
Wow, that math, that shouldn't go unnoticed, the exceeding expectations for 25 percent of your grade. The crazy thing is, is that that's 25 percent of your grade, if you're in high school, then you don't even, that doesn't mean you qualify for having L.A.D.s, but that's a big number.
That's a big number. Yes, yes. You know, one thing.
Test is just going to get harder.
Another, well, changing the test, we can talk about that in a minute. Just on the DESI website, on the accountability page, there's also, you can actually do a detailed report, broken down by category, subgroup, whatever. And just want to point out, for English Language Arts, for all students, exceeded expectations. Lowest performing, we improve but below. High needs, which is a combination of categories, we met the target. Economically disadvantaged, we exceeded the target. Students with disability, we declined, but I think we're on to something here. And our Hispanic Latino population exceeded target, and our white population exceeded target. Really important to note is that in math, all of our categories exceeded target, which is just.
Unheard of.
Really amazing, amazing. And it helps us be able to focus our work, which will lead me into the next part of the report. We already talked about absenteeism, so I'm on the back page now. In the area of English Language Arts, the lowest performing group improved but fell slightly below the 2019 target. The students with disabilities declined. Burgess Special Education staff will perform item analysis to inform remediation plans for students. They're already in that work. Mrs. Blesser saw that further item analysis that we did in September definitely indicated an improvement for grades in writing, for grades, a need for improvement for grades three through, three through five in the area of English Language Arts is write, will be writing. As evidenced by the score, as much as 6 percent below the state average on items involving essay content, topic development, and conventions. Our sixth grade students, however, exceeded well above state average on the various points that they were scored on. Interesting to note, we did, when we took all of our scores combined, we were 5/100ths of a point above the state average. Right, right. We went, we were, when we took all of the essays for all three, four grade levels and compared them to state, we were 5/100ths of a tenth. 5/100ths of a point above the state average. If you recall, our school.
5/100ths?
Our school, our school.
Are we reaching here, 5/100ths?
Our school improvement plan had actually called, had called for a 2 percent, we were driving for a 2 percent. We did do a deep dive, and Michael, you can dive in if you'd like. Into the actual samples. They only give us one of these sample items, so we can actually see student work. And we, you know, have able, been able to identify some areas of weakness. One of the things, Mrs. Churey, that we see, we believe we're seeing, especially with the lower grades, so the sixth grade students are very capable and competent with the electronic devices and typing, and understanding character counts, and what does a page of writing feel like when they're typing it? Where our younger students don't necessarily know that. So we know that we're going to have to continue to work in making certain that they understand. It's not just for core sentences, you have to write more. So good news is, we have a plan, and we are really focusing on getting, helping them improve their writing. Now, this is what I want to call reaching. I had to look for an area that we had something that was a deep below the state on the math test, and that was fractions in grade three. I think there were only two questions, but Lindickles will be addressing that, making sure that we're covering that. In science, it appeared that there was some physical science, and I think that this might be the second year in a row that something, physical science came up as being lower than the state average. One thing to note that we were able to ascertain, Bethany Reynolds has done a lot of item analysis and looking at the items. And they've now, which is, they've definitely, given the fifth graders, 30 percent of the questions are based on third grade standards, 30 on fourth grade standards, 30 on fifth grade standards. So we're looking for a way to provide reviews for the children from their previous years.
Wow.
So there's a lot of work on the fifth grade teachers to make sure that they're preparing them, and, you know.
It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not.
It's futile.
No, I think it's making informed decisions, so you can really. I know, I think it's making, it is a little bit. I'm trying to, because they're going to change, they're changing it. They're changing the writing.
Well, and that's going to change, you know, I was worried when they do that. Because they reduced, they're reducing the essays by one. So last year, third and fourth grade students had two essays to write, they're only going to have one essay to write. And fifth and sixth had two, three essays, so they'll have two. Which will make our comparatives more challenging. Because, well, one of the things to know, we received the multiple choice items earlier than we received the full score. When we went into, when we received the initial, we had like seven children in fourth grade that had 100 percent. When we received the writing, we did not have a child in fourth grade that scored above a four out of seven possible points on the writing. We, for Burgess, right, the, with the multiple choice only, we were at a 74.3 percent raw score. Three, six, it dropped to a 61.22 when they added the writing. Now, that's consistent, it's consistent across the state, it's definitely consistent across Union 61. So we know we have something to do with.
I was pushing it all off at the beginning, I'm like, I'm sorry.
Mary's going to, that's what she's going to do when she's retired, she's going to actually correct them.
I am currently training for an online writing study.
Yeah.
We're working, I mean, they did, we worked hard last year, so we got an incremental.
Nope. Is it 5/100ths of a penny?
Nope. Still an increase. Not quite a penny.
When we first saw it, that we were going to have a decrease, I'm like, oh, gosh. But I know that sixth grade is going to actually help, you know, what are they doing that's different? And see how they can help support the other grade levels. Because they did very well.
And I think, you know, in this era of social media, we're, we're very quick to do the quick response versus really kind of put.
Effort.
Yeah, thought.
And take your time, actually, I'm struggling with that big time with my dinner too, it's like, stop, listen, put effort in. It's, it's not who's done first.
Right, right, right. And there's a time and a place, certainly, and it's hard. We, we know, we teach that to our children every day, you know? Whether you're on the playground, walking in the hallway, you don't run in the hallway, you walk, you run out of the playground. So I think it's just a mindset, it's just going to take some time, you know? But just, I don't, it's hard.
Every day we plug it.
Every day we vote, that something sinks in with that one, one more child.
Right. So writing it is.
Writing it is.
Writing it is, special education ELA and chronic absenteeism.
And there's evidence to show students can early express themselves in writing, when they truly comprehend or understand what they're doing or talking about. So we like discourse, but discourse can be nonverbal too. Just another way to express. That's what we have for you.
Question?
Yeah. Do we bore you with data?
No, no, it's very good, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, yes.
Much more digestible now than it was in the.
Oh, I agree 100 percent, yeah. I just always struggle with the past being the BL and L because there's so much value in so many of the other things.
And that's why we use other measures to assess student progress and, you know, teachers, you know, teacher feedback, it's very valuable. It's a wonderful, it's important.
Well, remember back in the day with the legacy test, we were comparing schools against schools. It was this competition of the brain against one another. Now, it's a school against itself, so it's almost self motivating to better yourself, like someone who would exercise. If I run a nine minute mile, I want to kind of beat that, you know? So it's putting the competition locally instead of statewide. And that's a mindset change too. I don't know if it's better or worse, it's just educated.
It's easier to come up with an action plan.
Yes, that's very true.
We can, you can really just drill down, whether we need to have a focus. Be nice if the results were earlier or, because we have to draft a school improvement plan. Prior to actually having to do this, so we don't know what part of the.
You're almost a year in a year is just starting.
Reach out, if you have any further questions.
NASC legislative voting was in here, and the other one was in the other.
The MSC, NASC legislative is basically a financial bill that actually has some good support at the moment. The state's not yet sure where they're going to allocate the funds that they have for this act, the Student Opportunity Act. But there's a good chance, you know, could go to maybe some charter reimbursement, some issues that local schools are having. And there's so many other areas that they could come up with, put the money towards. They just, it's got some good support, we just, we just don't know where the money's going.
Are we, we're not considered rural schools, but our Holland and Wales are. Amberfield, all four but us. We're talking.
And the SWCC newsletter was emailed to, it basically just gives a quarterly report of what's going on in that district. Lots of good stuff.
I don't want to speak fast. Do we actually cover a lot? Do we have public access? Mr. Jones? Tantasco report?
So speaking of rural schools, we got a grant at Tantasco for $165,000, which we are spending on, you know, lots of stuff. Circular pump, we got T's better than it is. Outside security cameras, turf deals, top dressing, they're going to put some more of that, whatever, bill.
Coconut?
Coconut bill. Custodial salaries, clerical salaries, pathways, equipment, and facility upgrades.
So that was separate from the MSBA building.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Totally different. It was, shortfall anticipated for new hire training, special projects, and retirement costs. Also, custodial was budgetary shortfall due to unplanned summer OT and two additional working days in FY '20.
She's got the details.
We also got the, I think we usually get it here, so maybe next meeting, the college acceptances thing, which is always good and nice to see. You guys can look at mine if you want, or you can ask Erin.
Yeah.
Let's see, oh, the class of 2019's class gift is going to be a path, which I don't know if you've been there lately, but there's already a dirt path cutting across, and I was walking, and I was like.
Where?
The high school. It's, it's almost from, it's the field house.
Of the diagonal?
The diagonal, so they're going to, they're paying.
I just, my kids, I saw something about like, about like how humans will find the, like, the fastest, easiest way, and they will create their own.
And it's beat down.
And like, they never, like, in other words, like, our saying, architects should always wait and see how humans use things before they design it. And like, so they designed this crazy sidewalk, and everyone's already formed this.
Because everybody's in a rush.
So it's going to.
And it's freezing.
We just, oh my, I just noticed it too, so I was like, oh, that's awesome. I'm so excited about the class gift. Let's see, craft fair is this weekend.
Yeah, the traffic on Sarama.
Yep, that's right. We had, we went over cellphone usage, which I thought was interesting. We, the Bylaw Policy Subcommittee met with Principal Lucas and Principal Sturgis, and they both felt like it was being managed well. And teachers had, you know, things in place if it became a problem, that the school would back them with, like, for example, hanging the things on the doors if they wanted. I guess the, it's kind of, the decision is that teachers are using it for good, more than being used for bad.
I think it's part of life at this point.
So it's, yeah, it's kind of, they just.
Yeah, you try and take your kid's phone away, and you can't, because they have to do IXL on it.
It was interesting. Yeah, exactly. The other thing is that the cost of using the school has gone up for the first time in, I don't know how many years, but that came up as well.
With the whole cellphone conversation, did anybody talk, is it still the signal? I mean, I hear from so many people. I mean, I hear from so many people that are concerned about the fact that there's no signal.
There is no signal.
And there continues to be no signal as a safety situation. Does that ever come up at...
It, no, it did not.
It's so frustrating from a safety...
I mean, at a certain point of the building, of the building?
Most of the building, most of the high school, you can't text.
I feel like you can, like, get a, the wifi, if you get on the wifi there, you can.
But if you're, say, I'll just use an example.
No phone call?
No phone call. And I find that, I mean, this is not new, this has been since, been new to, well, since it's been cellphones. No phone calls, and occasionally iPhone to iPhone, but like, my husband's in IT, he hates Mac, Apple, anything, so he has a Droid, and he cannot, like, when my children are ready to be picked up, they have to text me to text him to go pick up. And there's no cell phone, I mean, there's no payphone, they wouldn't know what to do with it anyway. But I've always just not understood, why have we not yet invested in some kind of a booster? Especially in today's day and age from a safety perspective. If you're like there, and it's dark, and you're waiting for your ride, and you're like...
So it's just temperamental, is this a...
This is bad, this is, oh, always, this is bad, always. And then the second you get past 148, I thought it was by design, but at this point, if we're saying that, that the teachers embrace that we use it more than we... I think you can use apps, you can do things, but... They can use wifi, but as soon as you leave the classroom wifi situation, it's not, you know, there's enough activities, everything. Anyway, it's not our problem, but I think it's, I just have been wondering if it ever comes up. It's like every year, you just sit and deal with it, and you're just like, when is this ever going to get better?
Not that I've heard, but...
So, I was just curious about that. And that's, that's a wrap.
That's a wrap for me.
I actually am on the Superintendent's Goals Subcommittee, and that Monday, we'll meet again in January. And just trying to say, one of the things that came up was that, and you know, it's like, sometimes the goals, all of a sudden, there'll be a new goal because, say, you get a grant to spend money on windows and this and that, and all of a sudden, it becomes this big time, you know, time suck away from things that were your goals. Not that you can get away from those altogether, but just having the ability to have a little bit more points of contact throughout the year to say, okay, we still on target with this. And there's the introduction of the, on this committee is the Superintendent's Advisory Council, which is made up of students, and there's 11 kids on that that are actually contributing to the goal-setting process. And so we're also going to continue to meet, just to continue to gain from that. So it's a separate group that meets with the, you know, that are elected officials. These are kids that we're just interested in, it's a different, I would say it's a different group. So, yeah, so that was Monday as well, I probably should have brought it up before, but, yeah. Yep. And it was brought up again that the Union 61 schools are not, we don't have a full participation in Superintendent's evaluation. So I will start that early and often next year with the reminders and just, yeah.
They've made it extremely...
They made it, if I can be the first one to reply, yeah. It is, it is, so, yeah.
It's an interview. Yeah. I forgot.
Oh, the joint meeting is on November 18th, which is on Monday, which is great. So a week from Monday at 6:00. Do we have, well, the other joint here, are you guys going to be able to be there?
I'll be there.
You'll be there. I can actually make it, because it's not on Tuesday in a month.
But I'm not a, I haven't found a 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Old business? New business? Public access, too.
Every little boy.
Did you do the Burgess 5K this year?
About this year.
He's injured still.
Oh, you are, right?
I'm pretty much back to normal, so hopefully next year.
I think that, I knew that you were...
Any, anything in the works, change the route for those of us who are terrible runners?
That we know. Poor Christine, she's trying to make it start and end here.
I know, which is awesome, like, that's, that's a great...
And it's necessary because of like insurance, yeah. So, well, for insurance purposes, the race has to start and end. But 20 isn't an option for...
It's just a hilly town. I know. I'm only, I'm here in a row, I bought five...
She's looked, she's looked, she's looked.
I know. And she's doing, she does the one, the Home of the Brave. There's another one on, on next Saturday, the Brave 5K on the 16th, and that's a lot flatter. It's so bad, because I always like, I'll get it, saying, I'm going to do the Burgess 5K this year, and then the morning of, I'm like, I can't run up a hill today.
Two years ago, I was, and I just can't do it.
Which is really bad. So is that, I guess it's adjourned, a motion to adjourn.
I got one more question? I didn't know the term inter what bargaining?
Oh, interest, so interest, like, common interest, yeah. IBPs here.